Put him on the, put him on the.
He is? Alright, ready?
Okay. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this meeting a hold order. Council.
Council. Mr. Garrett, Ms. Altier?
Here.
Ms. Pennington?
Here.
Ms. Gage?
Here.
Ms. Donah?
Here.
Scott will be late. Um, David, would you mind reading the utilities for Scotland when it comes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any prior guests who would like to speak or assign them to speak? Like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the November twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four regular council meeting?
Second.
Ms. Altier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Donah?
Yes.
Ms. Donah?
Yes.
Alright, five, we have the fiscal officers' financial report.
The, um, income and property tax collected year-to-date is nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. The revenue total collected to date, two million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-three cents. Expenditures to date, two million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. And the fine balance for November two thousand and twenty-four, two million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and nineteen cents.
Thank you. Alright, six, do we have any old business? Seven, council president's report.
Um, the only thing that I have is, um, again, for those of you who are not aware, that the, uh, senior home did have a major flood this past weekend. Rick, really wanna thank you, your team, Addie, very, very, a lot of, a lot of people, very critical to helping people get relocated, getting, get to homes, get food, get all the stuff. Matt as well was there. I was there in early Saturday morning, just, I mean, it was horrifying to basically see the building in such disarray and how the water impacted this building. And, and again, my heart really goes out to all the people just trying to work with, um, organizations to try to get stuff, food and this and that, to help people. You know, some people didn't have renters insurance, they lost everything, so that's an unfortunate situation. So, again, just many thanks to, again, to everybody who was part of that, really helped support, support the community, it was very, very devastating. So, um, you know, one of the things we talked about is, you know, is there an opportunity for us in the future to get cots and different things like that? So that we can have a community building available to set people up in there. And you just don't realize when something like this happens, really how it impacts so many different people and, and what, what we can do to help. So, again, well, that will be one of my focuses, is trying to work with people to, to see what we can, get donations and those type of things to be able to set ourselves up for, um, you know, success. How about that?
Could they find, find out what the cost was? Was it sprinklers?
There was a sprinkler, water pipe.
Water pipe.
Thank you. Alright, eight, we have dispatch, police, fire report.
Hey, uh, motion to accept the dispatch from the police and fire report for November of twenty-four.
Second. Ms. Altier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington? Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Donah?
Yes.
Mr. Donah?
Yes.
Now we have mayor's communication. Uh, I'll just piggyback off what Sherry, um, talked about. It was a, it was a very, you know, unrooted situation, um, having to relocate, uh, what it was eleven of them. Last I know, there was eleven people that had to relocate to the hotel. Uh, a few others went with family and friends and, and it, it's just a difficult time. I spoke with the, the resident manager there about possibly trying to educate people on, cause I know at, at times, we all don't think about it until it happens. But, uh, rental insurance and getting stuff like that, because, eh, eh, you know, at times, I know it's rough for certain people when you're on a certain budget of income. But, um, that, it goes a long way whenever, you know, things like this happen, because the building's covered, but then your property's not covered. And then, now you have to go through the, the measurements of trying to get people to help you out. And like I, I, I've said to people, and it, it's, you know, as Wyndham, we're a small place and we help each other out as much as we can. And we also help other places, but it, it kinda doesn't always go that way in reverse. But, uh, I, I do wanna publicly thank our police department, our fire department, um, the schools, uh, Katrina and Diane up there, the managers, they were awesome. Um, Ted, St. John at Hope Town, uh, um, what was it, Serv Pro? And all the management and, and service people up there and anybody else in town that helped out. I'd also like to thank, uh, Renee, uh, man, what's her last name? Renee, the bus driver.
Turk.
She, Turk, she, uh, she took out, we end up getting a bus, she personally, you know, drove out and got a few of them out there. We got them settled in, me and my wife helped, you know, you know, settle in and snacks and stuff like that. So, eh, it was, it was a long day and all of them, once they sat down and they were good and they realized that, you know, certain things were taken care of, they had a good time. We all talked and, and smiled and had a good time. So, I mean, all's not lost and they, they wanted me to tell the chief and, and everyone involved that they are very appreciative of, of all the stuff. And I know, being in a small town, every time some kind of event happens, you know, negativity is almost always the first thing for some people to go to. And, and I, I just think we, we gotta shorten that stick and not let that overpower the efforts of everybody that was involved. So, thank you again to everybody that was involved and, and so far, everything's going good and things are being taken care of. And they should be back in there pretty soon, uh, soon as they want, but soon enough. And then, that's all I have.
Finance there.
Uh, motion to approve the fiscal officer's expenditures as received and expected to date two thousand and twenty-four and approved to pay the bills as received.
Ms. Altier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Donah? Ms. Donah?
Yes.
The motion to approve the off-line day balance for November two thousand and twenty-four as of February.
Ms. Altier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Donah?
Yes.
Mr. Donah?
Yes.
See, motion to approve ordinance number zero-two-oh-two-four-fifteen, an ordinance approving and adopting the temporary appropriations for two thousand and twenty-five for the village of Wyndham called for in that budget and declaring emergency. I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Ms. Altier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Donah?
Yes.
Mr. Donah?
Yes.
Motion to accept ordinance number zero-two-oh-two-four-fifteen.
Second. Ms. Altier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Donah?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Utilities.
We got a third and final read of ordinance number zero, or, oh, twenty-twenty-four dash ten. An ordinance to revise and amend section nine-two-one point zero-one of Village of Wyndham Utility Code to adjust sewer rate for the discharge of wastewater to the village. Uh, motion to accept our motion to approve ordinance zero, or, oh, twenty-twenty-four dash ten.
Second. Ms. Altier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Donah?
Yes.
Mr. Donah?
Yes. Third and final read of ordinance number oh-two-twenty-four dash eleven. An ordinance to revise and amend section nine-two-three point zero-three of Village of Wyndham Utility Code to adjust water rates for the purchase water from Village of Wyndham. Motion to approve.
Ms. Altier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Donah?
Yes.
Mr. Donah?
Yes. Alright, so, motion to approve ordinance number oh-two-twenty-four dash fourteen. An ordinance authorizing the abatement of rents for twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-four initially established in ordinance oh-dash-two thousand twelve-dash-three. And subsequently, suspending the amount of rent to be paid by the Water Revenue Fund and Sewer Revenue Fund to the General Fund for the use of municipal property on which the water and sewer plants are located and declare an emergency. Before we go any further, um, and here it states on the second paragraph, whereas Ohio Vice Code seven forty-three point zero-four indicates that the village administrator may charge a water rent or charge a sufficient amount which she determines. We live in a new world, is that supposed to be she? Is Ryan telling something, or is it supposed to be he?
Probably he. We're definitely going with he.
I just wanted to make sure that you're addressing him properly. So, I will make a motion to approve as amended to he or she, in case we change village administrators in the future.
As he, yeah.
He, she.
He slash she, not he, she. Okay. Do I have to, okay, so that's another question.
I don't really think you need to amend for a script or a reserve.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. So, I gotta suspend the rules, cause we're passing this on emergency. Okay, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Ms. Altier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Donah?
Yes.
Mr. Donah?
Yes. Now I'll make a motion to approve ordinance zero-two-twenty-four dash fourteen.
Ms. Altier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Donah?
Yes.
Mr. Donah?
Yes.
Thank you, David. Twelve, service committee. Economic development.
I got a second read of ordinance number oh-two-twenty-four dash twelve, an ordinance amending section eleven-seventy-six point zero-two. Purchase and zoning C-one local com, commercial district to address medical slash recreational marijuana facilities of the codified ordinances of Village of Wyndham. Uh, I got a second read of ordinance number oh-two-twenty-four dash thirteen, an ordinance adopting chapter seven-eleven to the codified ordinances to address medical slash recreational marijuana entities within the Village of Wyndham. And finally, I got a first read of ordinance number oh-two-twenty-four dash sixteen, an ordinance to suspend the water tap-in fees as contained in section nine-twenty-three point zero-two of the Wyndham Utility Code effective April first, two thousand and twenty-five through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, and set it at a fixed rate. Now, if the project goes through, the reason why we're doing this, and eh, the funding and stuff takes longer, do we have the option to extend that then?
We got the passable legislation.
Okay.
My understanding, you were doing it to the end of the year, so that's why we're, right there.
I thought we said to do it while the project was going until they closed the ditch.
Yeah, at least for a year, so. I was told through the year, so.
So, we can always extend it? Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve, or no, it's the first read, so. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Fourteen, we have safety and personnel.
Nothing really, um. Glad that the senior people were in there, uh, got, you know, situated and, um, is there any more food needed than all of that?
Um, as of today, um, Sherry can elaborate actually for a second on what she is going and working on.
Like blankets?
So, there's no, 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 no blankets, nothing like that. Food, yes, but the American Legion is donating, they're going out and getting a bunch of stuff.
For, it was approved last night at their meeting, so they're going to be getting stuff.
I'm working with them, that, just, and Diane, to see what all they're getting. I gave them a list of different food that they could provide and they're working on that. So, at this point, I don't necessarily know that there's, that they need some. Diane did take some stuff that people had donated to them today, and so I'm hoping that maybe the Legion will have the stuff available this weekend. And we should, you know, one of, somebody will take it.
Somebody's gonna be like a month at least.
I, I would guess, that would be.
And also, NDS is providing them with hundred-dollar gift cards, so they have those to use for certain things that they may need that doesn't come through donations.
Okay.
I mean, as of right now, eh, eh, it is, and I do wanna add that, that all donations and stuff are going through the senior home. They're not going through me, they're not going, so if you see any information out there like that, it, it's not me, I'm not collecting anything.
Okay.
None of the council is collecting anything, it's, it's all being directed through the senior home.
Okay.
And Diane's less.
Okay. Evaluations are in, so we're gonna look at that later. A little snipoo. Being, but that's all taken care of, so, um, there were backsides missing, but I think I got everyone's table situated there, um, nothing else really other than that.
Alright, thank you. Fifteen, the parks and rec. Thanks. Uh, planning commission, not this month, we don't have anything. Seventeen, police chief.
I just wanna thank everybody that came out and assisted us. UMA, uh, got us cops out here pretty quick, fire department, um, obviously the school called and they very quickly said that we could use a cafeteria gym to house and to help assist with, uh, moving everybody and getting them, uh, roof over their head, it was cold out. Hope Town and Hope Village Teddy, his cars did transport people to the hotels, um, and the school was willing to do that as well, so, and they did do it, so, um. It was just, everybody came together like always around here and it was nice to see and it was a unique experience, I've never seen anything like that. Um, it looked like Calhari went through the senior center, so, but, um, it worked out and went well for what it was, so.
Eighteen, zoning.
Um, okay, so, I did go to the supervisor of the tree, tree company the day after a meeting. And, uh, suggested they get down here and get registered, did not go over well. He said they've been in here for years, working for First Energy, blah, 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 and I said, well, we just need to make sure, I didn't point out taxes, cause people are gonna run. I said, we need to make sure for liability reasons, you're insured and bonded to work in here. And he said he's calling the supervisor, so, I did what I was supposed to do. Um, didn't have no permit, I think I issued the last one, I reported last meeting per driveway. Um, I did go to the regional meeting, I didn't know if you guys wanna hear a little bit about what's happening up there, but, um, Shaylerville, uh, someone brought up to try and bring in call centers and Todd P. was pretty much shooting that down because of the nuisance and all the different stuff could come along with that. Um, there was actually, uh, a couple lives on Lake Rockwell, they're trying to rezone a light industrial to agricultural, ru- rural, sorry, residential. Um, they're trying to maybe redevelop and bring in some new homes, that's kinda on the table right now. So, that was about it on that, so, alright, I made it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, nineteen, housing.
I got a few things, um, so my first situation is, I would like to ask, uh, well, I was talking to our solicitor. It's about nine-five-three-nine Maple Grove in particular. Uh, so, in our, in our ordinances, it says, to the saying of something like, uh, if there's an inhabitable apartment next to the one that you can move in, you're not allowed to move that person in because the structure can't receive a license. So, his issue with me is, he wants a certificate of partial occupancy. Now, I don't see that anywhere in our, uh, in our, uh, ordinances. And, uh, I was asking, cause I, eh, cause in, in our ordinance though, I can actually, granted if I, I like, but I wouldn't per se wanna put my name on something if it's got, if, if it's a building or a structure that's inhabitable right next to an apartment. So, I was just coming with that question for you guys, what you think, and our solicitor.
Uh, like, like what I, I told him, the, the thing would be if it was already occupied and we had to go through this, I mean, eh, eh, it's a different ballgame. Right. And at that point, then maybe you can get some kinda occup-, uh, you know, partial to fix up stuff, cause there's already people in there, maybe relocate them for a minute, whatever, but that, that could happen. But there is nobody in there.
Yes.
So, so at this point, just fix up everything while nobody's in there and then go, he promised to put somebody in there, he let somebody feel like they were gonna go in there.
Right.
Before he went through the proper steps and now he's threatening this, this and this. I'm, I'm not gonna, I've, I've been cool and ha-ha, smile with everybody, but
Right, and we have problems with him.
Nobody's gonna sit and tell me they're gonna do business.
And this isn't his first go-around with us.
Yeah.
He's waited two years for the building in front of him that we had to fight him for and we don't know who was the owner and this and that. Now we finally, uh, got him to actually do something with that building and now he's mad about the situation now. And, I mean, I, I, we went through, we, we studied the footage.
You have video.
Yeah, we got video footage in our.
It's not safe for people to live in there, so.
So.
Are we talking about issuing a certificate of occupancy?
Yes, he, well, a partial.
Doesn't the building department handle that? Why are we as a village handling that?
That, that is supposed to.
That's another thing, too.
Well, PMHA won't give them one, and so, cause they, they're putting it on us, saying that we're not allowing them in there, but they, they, they're not approving it either.
So, what they're asking.
Some of these parties actually issue, some people don't go through the, we as a village, we do.
Yes.
So, it's my understanding that the village should not be having their hands in that, it should be constricting, correct me if I'm wrong, it should be strictly the building coming.
Well, so, my question then is, why would we have inspections?
For rentals, yes.
That's what it is. It, 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 it's a rental, uh, license, is what he wants, is what he may K. wants.
A certificate, okay, cause when you say certificate, that's what is right there behind you, like, that kinda thing, where, how many people you're allowed in here and what is as.
Well, it's the licensing.
Okay, so, license, okay.
Right.
Totally different, okay.
No, I, I, I get it, what he wants to do is, he wants to put the person that he, he wants to put one apartment and he wants that to be okay, but in our, uh, in our, uh, ordinance, it says, the structure, the whole building has to be, uh, approved before we can put somebody in there. So, we can't have somebody in a apartment that's good per se, but the one right next door.
Is unsafe.
Is unsafe.
Correct, and we get home a little kind of stuff.
Right, you don't want those coming in, eh, eh, that's the problem, and I, I, that's what I'm trying to tell him, but he, he feels like we can do that. Uh, I saw something in there, I can be, I, I, I can probably do that, but I couldn't put my name on that.
I wouldn't approve personally, the whole building stuff.
Yeah, it'd kinda ruin this reliability. And that too.
Because then what happens if something happens in the other apartment building, it'll be in there, sits there for a year.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted the backing of the, of you guys.
Already.
I know you did. Just wanted to bring it to them.
He didn't, he don't wanna talk to me.
And it also sets precedence.
Right, right, right. Um, and are our codified ordinances on the internet, on our website?
They are, but they are working on getting updated.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, as long as they're on there, that way I can send him directly there, because he seems to think that the ORC is pertaining to Wyndham's. And I'm trying to tell him that also.
And if you don't think they're updating Nicole, and she has access to.
That one, yeah, I'm pretty sure that should be on there. Uh, lots, I got a, I got a lot of the, uh, rental licenses for two years now, so I'm, half of it is pretty good. I think I got like a few more buildings with people that wanted to fight me at the beginning of the year, but they starting to come to and realize I'm not, I'm not in this to try to make their life difficult. And we'll see about that at the beginning of the year or two. That's all I got for you guys.
Alright, thank you. Alright, twenty, village administrator. Twenty-one, solicitors' report.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, you too.
I heard the word hunchkey for the first time as well, so I appreciate that. Twenty-two, last chance remembers, or anyone in the crowd to squeal.
Uh, uh, I forgot, uh, I did do a year-end report, January, all the way through, I think we got like thirty-three permits. Looking back, I think twenty-two was thirty-one, so we're staying, and, uh, twenty-two is thirty-four, twenty-three, I think thirty-one, so we're hanging, I guess, it's. Okay, and then I did wanna say, um, when I do permits, I don't do them to contractors, I do them to the homeowners or the owners of the business. So, that way, if anyone has any concerns, that's who I deal with, not the business contractors, okay? That way everything stays smooth, we're going forward into a new year and hopefully we'll, everything's full speed ahead.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
May I have a copy of the report just for the file, please?
He's got it, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I can get you one, Nicole. There you go, Nicole.
Alright, um.
I have, I, does anybody else, I was waiting for
Go ahead.
In case anybody else had questions. Uh, so, on the, first one's on the senior building, obviously, not good what happened, um, but it brings to light a couple of questions, which with every event, you always have questions you wanna talk about afterwards. Um, it's my understanding, after talking to Ryan, nobody contacted Ryan and we had an active water flow. That's a four-inch line, I think, up there, is a dry strainer system, and when that rust out or whatever happened, the jockey pump takes, crap stops working, water is able to overcome that flapper and start pumping out water, and that's why we had such a big water load in there. Um, I've seen it happen on a couple of different calls that I've been on, and you have a lot of water, so it's just my question, in the future, can we set it up somehow to where if we have active water flows, anytime, just like a house fire, we contact the village administrator, because he's the one in charge of getting ahold of our operators. If the clairwell drops down, or the water tower drops down, or anything, that's why we employ him, to call out who we need to.
Yeah, but I took care of it, so, it was fine.
I, I understand.
No, I get it, I, I, I get what you mean, but at that point in time, when you're trying to scramble to get all kinds of stuff done, I, I, I did what I felt was best at the time and, and it, it was fine.
I, I understand.
I get, I get what you're saying.
I know, the way, what I'm getting at is, with dispatch, we have two dispatch systems. We have a police department that goes to Shrewsbury, and we have the fire department, which I've already talked to the fire chief about it. We get it set up in there, where as soon as we have, either they're calling mutual aid for the fire department, or they have an active water flow, or with the police department, you know, it comes in that they're responding to that, hey, let's put a call to, you know, the village administrator. Because, just like with Sultan and everything else, contact him from dispatch, because then it's not, it don't get put on your shoulders when you've got a million things running through your mind or anybody that's responding to the scene.
I get it.
What else? Quality IP, um, we got emails saying that there was, uh, a new email system from them, I've seen their card here, uh, I see Kate's computers back there, I saw a report for nineteen hundred and fifty-eight dollars, forty-nine cents for two computers. Did we sign a contract with them?
Yes, well, a quote, we signed a quote, not a contract, just a quote. There's no contract yet.
Okay, so they're doing work, but we don't have a contract with them?
Yeah, we had, we had, yeah, we talked about them doing IT work, we do not have a contract yet, just quotes were signed. Yeah, we had, we had, yeah, we talked about them doing IT work, we do not have a contract yet, just quotes were signed.
Okay, so how does that work if we bring them in on quotes, do we get bids for that?
Yes.
Cause we always talk about three bids.
Yes, we did.
And who reviewed them, just you two or?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
And that with everybody several times.
Okay, how's that working out then, like are we getting a contract with them for continued services?
We're, we have a meeting with them on Monday, right? We have a meeting with them on Monday, see which direction we're gonna take. And then from there, we can pass on to what we're gonna do.
If we're gonna stay with quality IP?
But right now, the the pro- the issue is, there's been so many things failing in here and if we, you know, if I sit up there and. Like we need a contract with this person, we do this, it doesn't work, now we gotta stop doing this, go out, do all that. I wanna make sure what we're doing is solid before we put anything in stone. But right now, we did have to move IT people because the stuff we had was what, ten years old or plus or whatever?
I know that, like early last year, maybe the year before, we had uh talked about switching over the servers and doing everything like that and. Had mentioned to move forward with trying to find somebody to do that, cause the servers were gonna cost us ten thousand dollars and everything else. I don't, I mean, I think that that was something that they were doing moving forward because. Like today, one of the servers didn't come all the way back and.
Fixed out?
It's, it's got a Band-Aid on it. So this has been a two-year-long process of trying to get rid of CGV. So I know that the mayor and that, this, this is stuff we've discussed in council, I know.
Oh, absolutely, I'm, I'm just making sure like, you know, we we talked to our village administrator about getting quotes and getting stuff. Taken care of with legislation through us, I just wanna make sure we're doing it the right way.
Oh, the quotes are all mine off, she could see them, and we met, met, met.
We met with at least three, there was what, Cloud Nine?
Cloud Nine, Hudson Communications.
There was Hudson Communication, Quality IP.
Yeah.
CGV, there was one more, other one, two or something like that, and at that point, it was, it was all finance, some of it was financial. Some of it was if they weren't contacting us back immediately, then you're not gonna contact us whenever we have an issue, so. It was kinda like who we felt, you know, was was reaching out to us, but that doesn't mean that's always the best fit for you either, so. We're, we're in the process of that, we have two meetings Monday, correct?
Just one now, one now, cause the server.
Okay, so they, the server thing and then we'll get all that information out.
Our equipment is all, and we had to move on some because we, we keep breaking, we keep shutting down and we are. The server, the water server went completely down last night, they were out here trying to get it back up. They're overnighting a new server for tomorrow morning, I dealt with it all day today, it's been, so we had no, couldn't look up people's accounts, nothing, it's ten years old. Shouldn't happen, we should have a rotation so we're not having to do all this at once, which we're going to have now. We should be replacing computers every few years. The Windows Seven on there isn't even, we shouldn't even have that, it's, it's a, we're very vulnerable, so that's what we're trying to stop. Shouldn't have a Windows Seven computer, so we, we have two, I didn't even know that until last.
We have to have Windows Seven for the software.
We don't have to have a Windows Seven server, so.
No, 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 but.
That's the one that went down, it's Windows Seven.
You guys see where I'm coming from, like.
I get what you're talking about.
Keep bringing it up.
It needs to be for everyone.
Oh, yeah, we did, we did, we got all kinds of stuff.
But that I do know there was at least four or five.
We're just kinda trying to put our band, trying to fix some things before we really go down.
Right, and I, I just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page because. What's good for the good, is good for again, and we got.
We got all the quotes sitting in there.
Okay.
The whole, there's a whole big stack, you can come in and look anytime you'd like, some of the quotes we've ever got.
Are we in the police department yet, or where are we at with that, have anybody, is, have they come out?
We talked to Mister Bodner.
Bodner, Bodner.
Today, uh, everybody's reached out to him in the past couple of weeks. Finally got a hold of him today, they're gonna work out, Nicole and Ryan and Chief, they'll work out whatever. Is gonna go forward, but I do think we have his attention now, so things should be moving soon.
Okay. Um. Okay, that's, that's all.
Sure, they all look like their stuff.
Yeah, um, yeah, here we go. The properties we sold, that's the one I just looked up there, did we get that all figured out for which ones need to come back to us, that we buy back?
That's what, me and Ryan are gonna sit down, it it's, we're trying to track down papers from when Debbie was here and all that and stuff and it. We, it's, it's a slight process, but we're gonna track down, cause we're at the four-year mark for the fir- very first ones. So we're gonna get into those, we actually got, what, two of them? Two, that guy sold us the two back over by the school. And then, I wanna say.
One, one.
Yeah, one. And then there's another one that, that is, I think we could get back to, or I switched it, I put it, I made it a part of that NDS move when they're supposed to build the houses. So the rest of them, yeah, we have to, we have to figure out something.
Yeah, it was just like last week, I got ahold of the title company. And asked if they could send us, um. A list of what they sold, when they sold it for the village, that way we can go from that. So, she hasn't said it to me yet, but I'll track out to her and see if I'm ever able to do it, but she said it wouldn't be a problem, so.
This is gonna be very much money?
And then the process, that's what I was just gonna come to, the process of this is, we, we buy back at the rate that they, we sold it to them. So, we go back.
It's pretty cheap.
Yeah, so I mean.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
So whatever they pay for it, we just, we basically give them.
For properties. There's a good amount of properties over the course of a couple of years.
Thirty total, but I don't, not all of them.
Yeah, it goes in there, you know what I'm saying, yeah.
This is what I, when you see me get nervous about my glasses, and I start to wear my glasses.
And then it was done in.
It was done in, it was done in waves, so there's, like certain ones aren't eligible for a year, two or three anyway, so.
It'd be like eight, four.
Yeah, it's gonna take a while to get that, and to be honest, the ones that sold later are the ones that are at more activity on anyway.
At least the ones that have not, the building process, is that it?
Yeah, so if you, if you're already past your four years or approaching that, we got to contact them and then make them either get on the ball with it or or they. Buy it back, or we, um, buy it back for them. Um, Century Twenty-One did reach out to me and they are trying to get a couple of people moving, I did have, um, on. Maple Grove, the end of Maple Grove and Community, they are in the process of trying to get their stuff figured out too. And they want, they were gonna bring it to us to see if they could consolidate two of their property, they bought two, they wanna make them into one, so. They'll contact us at that time and we can figure out, but they sound like they're getting ready to start, start doing something, so.
I think, uh, when it comes to that, we gotta be careful.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done lots, yes, yes.
That, we did that over there and they put up what?
Yes.
Very, very small home.
Right.
Yeah, um, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can sit Monday when we're, we can sit.
I was just bringing it up because of the recreations.
Yeah, nah, me, me and Ryan keep talking about them, you know how things go, so.
Right.
To be honest, I'm, I might have to bring a couple of you guys in on that and we can just sit and look at paperwork and, and go on some of that way. We can figure it out.
Now, onto the, this is the last one I promised, the NDS properties that you said you were giving to them to build houses. I think I brought this up before, and I hope I don't, just don't come out the wrong way. Are those gonna be like the ones that were built back in the early two thousands? That were supposed to be sold at a certain, after a certain time and they held on to them? Because we don't collect as much rent or uh tax revenue from those, because they're subsidized by whatever, by the government.
And I I brought that up to them and they said when we get, they, they still have to go through some like weird approval thing, it it like, it's taking a while. But, cause they might sell them back to us, if they don't do anything with them, I told them I want them back, so. With, if they do do that, she said, then that's when we'll discuss how they're gonna do their, their thing, if it's gonna be a ten-year or whatever, however they did that. And at that time, that's when we can say, hey, we don't want this, this or this way.
Cause those ones hurt us as a village with.
Right, cause it brings down the value.
Yeah, I mean, there's some of them in there that are allegedly appraised at like thirty-eight thousand dollars. And they're nicer than my house, and newer.
And that's like, that's the type of stuff I want like DeMell and Chris to, to start real noticing and him working on it, then that way they know. And look, we can't have, because what it is, people find loopholes and once they find that loophole, it's, it's over with for us if we don't find it first.
I gave you a whole list of every one of them.
We know, David, I, I started to think you don't have a job or anything else on that. I'm just, ah, you're, you're good at it, but good, ah.
I did put in like ten streetlights, so I know, I drove around the other day. Yeah, I drove around there, you're working, but I still put it in, out of goodwill.
It's Freddie Cooper.
Oh, I put in like ten, last night I was sitting there, finally got around, but I drove around.
Form, highlights, and that's, you can put them all on one spreadsheet.
Well, I, online.
See, you have it individually, you can submit, it's a spreadsheet, you can fax it right to the number, just so you know, I have it at Bristol. The guy came up there and gave it to me, I'll bring one in.
Well, their new system online, you could just, instead of going through each one, submitting with your information, you just add a line, add a address, add a address.
That's good, I think, good, he just brought that, come on, it's, it's pretty.
So, that's all.
Sorry.
Is the organizational meeting gonna be after executive session?
I was gonna do that, but I don't know how long that's gonna.
Cause we can't come out of this meeting, go, or can we, can we come out of this meeting, go into organizational and come back into this meeting or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that you can do exec in the beginning of a meeting and then go through your normal protocol.
Because we have the organizational meeting tonight as well.
Fair.
So we can go out of this meeting, go to organizational, adjourn that and then come back into the regular schedule.
We're going out of this meeting to go into exec, then you're gonna come out of exec.
Right.
Then you're gonna get out of this meeting and then go into another meeting, correct?
Yeah, he wanted to put organizational before executive.
That's what I'm asking, if we can adjourn this meeting and then start it back up after, we do the order.
That gets it done, so that nobody has to hang around, right?
Right.
Okay, I got it. So do we adjourn this meeting or do we just go into the executive, uh, organizational?
We're not, we're not, we still gotta go to exec.
Yeah, we still have. Charles, what, what I'm asking is if we can, before we go into executive session, because that's gonna be a lengthy conversation.
Can we?
Can we adjourn the regular meeting? Go start a new meeting for organizational, adjourn that, and then come back and restart our regular.
I'm not following, which, I mean, if you. No, yeah, I don't know why to just go into exec like you.
Executive session's part of our meeting.
Yeah, right.
So we, we.
You, if you're gonna, execs, yeah.
We should do that organizational first.
Correct.
Got it done.
That's a whole separate meeting, so you need to do your executive and your council meeting.
Okay.
Adjourn your council meeting, then you can do your.
Okay.
I like it, it's clever, but. All right, no one else has anything? Our calendar.
Uh, public calendar?
I already did figure it out.
Oh. Calendar's gonna be on the organizational, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
What do you?
Oh wait, we forgot the solicitor, oh no, we didn't have the calendar.
You're confused too?
I am very, yeah, it's been a long.
So here's my next, before we go into executive, are we voting when we come out?
You talking about for the?
Yes.
Everybody's feeling.
So there will be business afterwards before we go into organizational?
I think so, yeah.
Yep.
Before we do go in and end all this, one last thing I have, is that the AMATs, um, they're, we are members of their committee. And right now, there's me as a representative, and then we need another representative and an alternate. Right now, we have Debbie on there and Stacy Brown, either one of them are with us. And what AMATs is, is the transportation study, uh, committee, so they work with like travel, um, parks and like trails and. Stuff like that, railroad systems, transportation, any kind of stuff.
Is this the one you were, were doing something with, Terry?
Yeah, that's the, remember I get the thing for the bike trail?
Yeah.
So we need two, two more representatives as a representative and an alternate to join this meeting.
How often do they meet?
I was gonna say.
Uh, as it didn't say on the paper, but it's, I do know it's once a month, and you can do them online, so. I do, I get a link every month about.
Council members or can it be, committee or community members as well?
Um, it, it said, I believe they're council members.
Okay, well, you said Stacy's Brown, that's why.
Well, she was on council.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Oh, Stacy Brown, that hasn't been updated that long.
Nah, it's been going like this for a while, so. But they reach out to me.
If it, if it could be online, I, I could do that.
Yeah, I can too. I mean, you have always put me down.
All right, thank you, that's all I have for that, I just wanna get that out to you.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to enter the executive session to consider compensation of public employees for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Second.
And council members, village administrator. All right, seven thirty-eight, we're back in, uh, on record again?
Then we wanna make a motion to adjourn? Yeah, if you're not doing any business? We don't know, do we need to do anything?
We need to make a motion to exit executive session.
No, you don't need, you don't need a motion, you just have to resume, from what I read, executive session.
You have to come out of exec.
Right, you say you're back on the record, right?
You go back on the record, yeah, what's on?
Which I just said, yeah, she did.
But you can't vote for executive session.
No.
No, but I, we've always voted to come out of the executive session, back into regular, this is always what we've always.
Yeah.
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 I'm always.
Do you want me to get you one of these books? I've been following it.
No, seriously, I, I, oh, you have it!
It's right in there!
Are you kidding, do you really think I don't have it?
I know, no, no.
Come on.
He's got some amendments for it.
Do we need to do anything else?
We had no, we're done, cause we're gonna discuss, I, so we need to make a note on record, when we're gonna have the next.
On the thirtieth.
For that, so, we can, they don't have.
I'm sorry. Um, I'd like to make a motion to. Adjourn regular council meetings, right?
Okay, are you, uh, are you gonna make a motion to have a meeting on December thirtieth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to have a regular council meeting on December thirtieth at six PM to discuss compensation.
What you wanna mean, what you mean?
Is that a special meeting?
You don't have to say it.
Yeah, it's a special meeting.
It would be special meeting, yeah.
Special meeting. Or a special.
Special meetings are more so for single individuals.
Discuss compensation of employees?
Yes.
Yes, and.
So. And budgets?
Yeah.
Okay, who seconded, Terry? Yeah.
Mister Garrett?
Yes.
Miss Altier?
Yes.
Miss Pennington?
Yes.
Miss Gage?
Yes.
Miss Bellmapp? Mister Bellmapp?
Yes.
All right, now make a motion to adjourn regular council meeting.
I'll second that.
Mister Garrett?
Yes.
Miss Altier?
Yes.
Miss Pennington?
Yes.
Miss Gage?
Yes.
Miss Bellmapp? Mister Bellmapp?
Yes. Ah, I'll start our own meeting, right?
You've always got a variable, you know?
You got that?
Yeah.
You ready to start that meeting?
We got you.
Yep.
We can run through this one.
Yeah, this one, what?
This, yeah, this goes quite well.
Yes, you do.
All right. All right, I'd like to call the organizational meeting to order.
Mister Garrett? Miss Altier?
Yes.
Miss Pennington?
Yes.
Miss Gage?
Yes.
Miss Bellmapp?
Yeah.
Mister Bellmapp?
Yes.
All right, we will do the selection of, is anyone interested in, um, council president?
I would like to nominate Cherry.
Me too.
She should have another year.
Anyone else, you wanna be council president?
No, her. Hell no!
You wanna be council president, I mean, you don't have to. You know, one, two, we gotta go another, I like. So once we're gonna go another round.
Yeah, I do, yes, she does.
Let's look, sure.
Mayor, let's, we have to vote?
Uh, yeah, we'll do an actual vote and then we'll go from there. All in favor of Sharon?
Bye, bye.
Yeah, and are we gonna do an actual vote or no?
We have to do an actual vote?
Or?
President and council?
Council president.
We did verbal user.
We did verbal, is that good?
Yeah. Okay, I.
I know it.
There's one thing that's not on this agenda, that's the fireboard.
Yes, I know, yeah.
So I don't know if we can add that at the end?
Get out? Alright, so next we have a motion to approve the dates and times for the two thousand twenty-five meeting schedule.
Yeah.
I'll approve it, or I'll second, I'll make that motion, I'm sorry.
I'll second it. Mister Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Eltier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Mister Bellnat?
Yes.
Ms. Bellnat?
Yes.
Alright, we good?
Yep.
Alright, motion. Motion to conduct all window, uh, village of window meetings in full compliance with Ohio Public Record and Open Meetings Law.
I'll make that motion.
Mister Garrett? Ms. Eltier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Bellnat?
Yes.
Mister Bellnat?
Yes.
Alright, motion to set every other Friday as paydays for village employees beginning January sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
It's not Friday, huh?
What'd you say?
Said it's not Friday, huh?
Well, we have to do it every year.
You have to do it every year? Yeah, yeah. Mister Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Eltier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Mister Bellnat?
Yes.
Ms. Bellnat?
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm in the house, take all one, I don't know what payday is. Motion to set two thousand twenty-five mileage rate as set by the Internal Revenue Service to sixty-seven cents a mile.
Make motion.
I'll second.
Mister Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Eltier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Bellnat?
Yes.
Mister Bellnat?
Yes.
Alright, motions to approve the fiscal officer to attend trainings as required with expenses and mileage reimbursed.
Oh, make that.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll make that.
Okay, Mister Garrett?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Eltier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Bellnat?
Yes.
Mister Bellnat?
Yes, thank you for attending the trainings.
Alright, motion to approve fiscal officer to transfer monthly from the water and sewer accounts to their prospective debt service accounts to cover debt payments.
I'll make that motion.
Second it. Mr. Garrett?
Right, hold on, are we willing to dispossess it or?
No, this is the, just for the debt service, for the loan payments, just for the loan payments. Ms. Eltier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Bellnat?
Yes.
Mister Bellnat?
Yes.
You just passed legislation.
No, no, this, this is, yes, totally, that was for rents, this is just to make the, cause there's a debt service account, I pay the loans out, all our loans, so that's just to make the loan payments.
Okay. Alright, next, motion to approve fiscal officer to transfer monthly overpayment applied amounts to the correct accounts.
I'll make that motion.
Mister Garrett? Ms. Ms. Eltier?
Yes.
Ms. Pennington?
Yes.
Ms. Gage?
Yes.
Ms. Bellnat?
Yes.
Mister Bellnat?
Yes.
Alright, next we will have, does anyone want to nominate themselves for fireboard? David? Anyone else? Terry, you don't wanna run it back?